My name is, you know, and he wrote, I bought the lawn a lot of us. We're now saying, he's saying, I bought the city and the city for him.
Well, I mean, it's bad for him, but now that made a lot of people.
Good everybody, welcome to the happy, happy commission, right? The Historic Resource Commission. And we just thank you, don't forget, if you haven't had your parking validated, we do pay for your parking, okay? So, at this time, I'd like to, will the secretary please call the role for us?
Madam Chair Christie.
Here.
Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Hardy.
Here.
Commissioner Hiddardale.
Here.
Commissioner Marashi.
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen.
Here.
Commissioner Rush.
Present.
Vice Chair Schaefer.
Here.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Would everybody please rise for the pledge allegiance of our flag. Commissioner Rush.
Raise your hand over your heart and please repeat with me the pledge of the greatest nation on earth, and please do not be inclined to take a knee. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Now, at this time, it public comments. Now, what public comments mean is any item that's not agendized, you can bring forth to the commission. Make sure that you fill out a little form for us, and we'll take that. All of you are here because your items are agendized, so that will come later. From Historic French Park, this is Debbie McKeon.
Yeah, you know, I'm here to just speak briefly about one property, not in my neighborhood. It's 918 South Broadway, very special house. Commissioner Hardy has been tasked with writing up the review. It has since, it's changed hands fairly recently, and she's writing up the review to, for a proper renovation and rehabilitation. And I was in the house, which we don't control the inside, but also we walked around the property a few times. If you've never written a review, Janelle can share with you the joy that it is. And, and every one of you should, at some point, go along, it's kind of like a ride along, and, and that, I'm hoping that that property becomes the poster child for all that really, that is good about historic preservation and what this body does. In French Park, we have never seen anything to that degree of wreckage. And, and it's going to be a very difficult task. I've seen some of Janelle's preliminary writings, and it's just, it just goes on and on, and she must have writer's cramp taking care of that. But, everybody should do that once, at least. So, hopefully, I can encourage you to just try that, and so you can see what we're doing out in the neighborhoods, what the kind of time and effort and passion that it takes to get that sort of thing done, and it might help you make decisions in the future, who knows? Thank you.
You. Thank you, Debbie. Well, yes.
Debbie, I have a question. Did you say 918 South Broadway?
Right.
And what's, tell me what that property, I'm trying to picture.
I think it's 718.
No, it's 918.
Is it 918?
918. Is the last surviving Carpenter Gothic, example of Carpenter Gothic?
It's the Palmer House, it's a landmark house, it's number 46 on the list.
In fact, in fact, your gal in your office had it listed for sale when it sold recently.
Okay.
Yeah, it was a, it was a, it was a foreclosure, you know, REO.
Okay.
And, oh my god, that house has been so horribly abused, it's just, we, I mean, we could hold awake there. I mean, it's terrible.
Let's hope the new owner does some proper renovation.
I hope so, but I think he's going to have to be leaned on.
But, I can tell you that with close observation, there, it's very much still intact. And sometimes it's really hard to appreciate because certain elevations have framing on the exterior, so it's really hard to kind of digest what you're looking at, so, but we're working on it.
Okay. Any other? Would the secretary please mark the presence of Commissioner Garcia? Welcome. And before we get started, we have a new commissioner, a good friend of mine, Ken. Is that?
Rush.
Oh, let's go, not the, not the.
What did I do?
That's okay. Ken Nguyen, welcome, Commissioner Nguyen, would you tell us a little bit about yourself before we get started?
Thank you, I'm, I'm a Santa Ana resident for 35 years. I have served for 12 years and board of park and recreation of the city of Santa Ana, and just been appointed to play commissioner as commissioner. I'm looking forward to serve, provide better service to the city as well, as a resident. And I have learned this Historic and Resource Commission is a very fun commission to be in, and I'm looking forward to serve you along with any one of you. Again, thank you so much.
Boy, do we have a reputation out there? Is that what our reputation is? We're getting. Vince, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Just want to let you know, the city manager intends to be here momentarily to kind of say hi to this group right here. She's unfortunately got tied up with another matter, and so she'll be here in a few minutes, so, just want to let you know that she is planning on coming down here and saying hello and speaking with you for just a couple of minutes, so.
Okay.
When she gets here, I'm going to get a call from a floor to let you, to let us know.
Okay, and we will move forward with the agenda.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, our next item is our consent calendar at this time, with the listings, and our consent calendar list, item A, which is the minutes of the special meeting of July 20th, and then, from B to H, Historic Property Preservation Agreement numbers. So, do I have a motion to consider items on the consent calendar from A to H?
I move, we, approval of the full consent calendar.
Moved by Commissioner Assistant Schaefer.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Rush. Is there any discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Thank you so much. Okay, the next is Commissioner Communication Disclosure. Do we have any commissioners who wish to disclose any items? Commissioner Rushi?
Yes, on Sunday, Chair Alberta Christie and myself visited all four homes, and we met with one of the homeowners in Parks, in, oh, it's Parks on Avenue, yes, right.
Okay, anyone else? Okay, now, our next order of business is our regular business calendar, which is our public hearings. This is your opportunity to speak as we come to your property, okay? This is the time and place for, I thought I saw it, but not, okay. This is the time and place for the public hearing on item number one, for Historic Resource Commission, application number 2017-04, Historic Registry Categorization number 2017-21, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement number 2017-21, for the property located at 2337 North Santiago Street. Staff presentation.
Madam Chair, Melanie McCann will be presenting this afternoon. What we've done in the interest of time, as we have in the past, is consolidate the individual presentations this evening, and then, as a commission, I think what we've done in the past is act on each of them individually. If that would be okay, we'd like to proceed in that fashion this evening.
Okay, do you want to have, normally, what, what he's saying is normally, we'll have the first one, and they show the home and do the presentation, and then we vote on this, and then go to the next one. They want to do all of them at one time, is what I'm understanding?
We'll have individual presentations, but we've consolidated them all into a single PowerPoint this afternoon, which is consistent with what we've done in the past.
Okay, is that okay with the commissioners? Okay, yes, okay.
All right. Hi, good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners, happy to be here tonight. So, I'm filling in for Manny Eskamia and Ricardo Soto, both who had other commitments tonight. So, I'm going to walk you through the four projects, and we'll pause after each, a description of the project, and then you can vote. So, we'll see how that works. So, tonight, we've grouped a presentation for all the four requests for the four different properties, and each of the requests includes asking to be placed on our local register, and also to pursue Mills Act agreement. So, as listed up on the slide, there's four different locations, one on North Santiago, North Point Seria, North Riverside Lane, and West River Lane. As you might recall from prior presentations, chapter 30 of our municipal code outlines the criteria for being eligible for different types of classification as historic structure. All the four, the four properties we're going to be reviewing tonight have been determined to be eligible as contributive structures. The definition for that is that a building, structure, or object, or site contributes to the overall character and history of a neighborhood or district, and is a good example of period architecture. So, the four houses that we will be seeing meet that criteria, and we're recommending that they be placed on the registers as contributive. The first one is in Park Santiago, it's at 2377 North Santiago Street. It's being proposed that it be named the H.L. and Johnson House. Each of the homes' names for this evening are based on the first recorded occupant, and, as I mentioned earlier, it's proposed that this home be listed as contributive. It was constructed in 1927, and is a good example of an English Revival architectural style. So, some of the features that are, that are seen in this particular house is it has a steep pitch, cross gabled roof, its exterior, as you can see, is clad with stucco, it has asymmetrical exterior that features groupings of windows that are fixed and also casement, and they're either rectangular, or as you can see, they're round arched. So, once again, this is considered to be a good example of period architecture, thus meeting the requirements of chapter 30. So, based on that, it's recommended that the commission adopt a resolution to approve it being placed on the list and categorized as contributive, and also recommend to council that they authorize the Mills Act Agreement, HIPAA 2017-21. If you have any questions, I can respond to them.
Commissioner Rush?
Um, maybe I'm missing something, but why is this called the H.L. and Johnson House?
So, as part of the history research for the project, we go back and we look at who, who lived there, the recorded residents and or owners, and if there's not a particular person that's had significant history that lived in that house, or someone that's had an extended period of time in that house, then the policy has been to default to the first recorded occupant of the house.
Well, I'm not an English major, but why, why does it read H.L. and Johnson?
I think there's a typo on the PowerPoint in the, in the report.
It's supposed to be H.L. Johnson?
H.L. Johnson House.
Oh, okay, I thought, geez, well, that seems odd, yeah, all right.
Very absurd.
Never mind.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
We have our, I guess, the interim city manager, we do have a PowerPoint, but, you know, we are respective of your time.
I will wait, please, finish your time.
Okay, very good, you can see some of our historic homes.
Thank you. So, we could pause at this point for the commission to act on this particular measure?
Okay, good, this is it, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, with the applicant, I know the Talas are here, hi.
Hi.
Please, be welcome.
So, I think she, did you want to just say hello? Hello, how are you? I'm thrilled to be here tonight, and I've been so proud of my house ever since my husband and I moved in, and it's an honor to be here and have it considered for this designation.
You're from, where did you come from, and why did you settle here? You were telling an interesting story.
Of my.
Could you come a little bit closer?
When my husband and I were first married, and we were looking for a house, I believe we were looking in Uptown Whittier at some of the older houses, I remember a big white colonial-style house that we were looking at, so we've always had this interest in historical homes, and it's, it's been our delight to have actually achieved that, finally, that, the historical home. We enjoy everything about it, we enjoy the wood floors, we enjoy the wonderful neighborhood, we enjoy the uniqueness of so many of the features in our house, that you wouldn't find in a normal house, in a modern house.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, Melanie, could we go, could you show the house? Just keep the house up there? Okay, thank you, okay? Is there anyone else that wished to speak on this application? Okay, if, have we received any written communications? No, okay? The public hearing is now open, okay? If there are anyone else wish to speak on this subject, the commissioners have any comments, we'll figure it out, okay? Commissioner Schaefer?
I'm thrilled to see this house come on the registry, finally, it's about time. It's one of the oldest homes in Park Santiago, and is truly beautiful inside and out, it has a lot of integrity and a lot of originality. There's a Bach Elder tile fireplace, there's niches and arches that mirror the three arches on the front of the house. It's just really a special home, and by putting it on, I know it's going to be preserved even longer. I've had the privilege of selling this home, I think, three or four times in my career, and it's, every time, it's just a delight, and the picture doesn't really do it justice. I'd say it's a much more handsome home, and it's really a deep red color, it's, looks a little bit orangey in the picture, which is not true.
Right.
But, it's just a beautiful home, and if the commissioners have not had a chance to drive by, I would encourage you to do that. It's a very, very nice location within the neighborhood, and a very handsome home. So, congratulations, Pat.
Anyone else?
I would agree with Phil, looking at it, with the chairperson, Alberta, and myself, it is a beautiful home, crimson and everything else, and obviously, the owner cares for it very much. So, I would like to make the motion that.
Okay, okay, I just had a few.
More comments, babe.
More comments. Anything else? Okay, I, you have to go and see this house, like I said, like Commissioner Schaefer said, it does not do, the picture does not do it justice. I mean, it is a gorgeous home, I wouldn't want to be the roofer, you know, on that. This is clearly an English Revival style, if you ever want to think about what is it, you could point to this house, because of the fact, and it is just very well kept. Thank you so much for choosing Santa Ana over Whittier, to, to make your investment here, okay?
Thank you.
And we appreciate it. Anyone else? If none, Commissioner Rushi?
I would like the motion that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission application number 2017-04, and approve Historic Register Categorization number 2017-03. I also recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and clerk of the council to execute a Mills Act agreement with Carl and Patricia Tellus, subject to nonsubstantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Rushi, second by Commissioner Schaefer, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those oppose? Thank you so much, welcome. Thank you so much, we really appreciate it. We'll pause here, how's that? Everyone, okay, Vince, do you want to introduce himself?
She's there, no introduction needed. Not needed at all.
Her name, the audience.
Thank you for giving me a few moments this evening, but I, I know what your package is like, so I'm not going to take more than just a few minutes. I'm Cynthia Kurtz, I'm the interim city manager in Santa Ana, and I did want to come to, I'm trying to visit all of the boards and commissions that advise the council, a couple of reasons. One, I've always worked in cities where boards and commissions and advisory groups are very important, so it was one of the first questions I brought up to the council as I started my regular, you know, monthly, bi-monthly week meetings with each of the individual council members. You know, how do you use the advisory commissions, what do they do, what's their role, how do they fit into the decision-making in, in Santa Ana? And I found out that they, you're very important, each one of them was very strong in how much they count on the expertise that commissions like yours bring to the process, and how much I'm almost unquestioned the recommendations are that come from committees like yours to the council. And that's a beautiful house, it'll be a pleasure to sign that Mills Act agreement. And, but, but then we started to talk about the communications between advisory bodies, and most of the communications were from individual members and the person that appointed them to be on the commission, and started to talk about that being an important communication, but there's also communications from the body to the body, and sometimes, just the things that staff brings to you to act on, don't give a full interpretation of what you're seeing as your role and the work you are doing, and how you feel about that work, and how you might like to change that work, or what you see coming up in the future that would make that work better. And from that, we came up with the idea of asking, at least once a year, we're starting there, and we'll see where it goes, asking each advisory board or, or commission to come to the city council at a time that's convenient with the chair or other members, as you choose as a, a commission, and just spend some time talking to the council as a whole, about what you do, how it's going. The first meeting that we had was a presentation from Arts and Culture, and it was very interesting because they immediately got into a discussion, almost immediately, about sister city, and there were changes right away in what the commission thought they might do, and then some things the council would like to see, and things that the commission would ask for to help them in doing that work, so I think it will be valuable. I hope you have received a letter of invitation to come at your convenience, again, when you, it's the right time, and when you decide that, to contact my office, because we would love to find a meeting that you could come and do that. The, the other thing is, when I first arrived, some commissioners individually came to meet with me because they wanted to ask me questions, sometimes about their work on the advisory board, and sometimes about other things, and I realized how inconvenient that was for all of you to have to think that you had to set up separate appointments, so, I thought, a better idea is if I would come here and just offer myself, if there are questions that are not to the council, but things that you'd like to address to the city manager that I might answer, or I might bring back to you, or I can update you on where we are on, on things that you think that we might be impacting your work, or things that won't, but you're interested in, so, I, I don't have a presentation other than to say I'm available either tonight, or at your convenience as well, to be a resource to the commission, to the commissioners.
Well, we want to thank you for being here. You're the first city manager to come before our commission.
That's amazing to me.
And it's true. And, is there anything that the commissioners would like to ask our interim city manager?
Oh, I'd love to ask a question. You, I, I understand you're from Pasadena.
I am.
What was their interaction with, they must have had a historical commission?
Oh, yes.
And what was their interaction with the city council there?
We had a historical commission, it was very busy, like I see yours is, it is incredibly important part of Pasadena, I'm very proud of, of the heritage of the city, and of the buildings that are there, and very active in Mills Act, and in overlay zones for a historic designation. I think, it used to be that Bungalow Heaven was the largest historic district in the United States, which we were proud of, being such a tiny city, I don't know if it still is or not, but it, it has to be in the top, the top numbers. The, the commission met on a monthly basis, and reviewed, very similar to your work, they did also come to the council and report, there was an annual written report that the commissions provided, in addition to an oral report, and then there would be communications, usually in writing, because of just schedules and so on, that the commission would provide, and somehow, they usually were around budget time, as we were looking at what the resources we needed for the commissioners to, to do their work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schaefer?
I have a question. I've been on this commission for about 15 years, and seen a lot of changes in the city during that time, and our fees to go on to the Historic Registry and the Mills Act have been up and down, and they've just recently gone back up to almost $10,000, which is really prohibitive for most of our residents in the city. We've been, I've brought this to staff's attention, and we've been told the city's going to do a fee study. I just want to encourage you, as the city manager, acting manager, to do that sooner than later, because there's still very many people that would like to put their home on the registry, but now feel stymied, because they can't afford the $10,000. So, something that's a reasonable amount for going forward. I'd like to encourage that as soon as possible.
I, I think that when the recommendation to, you know, it was recommendation was, the fee is, is 10, and we cut it in half, and it was during a budget when we were looking at a $9 million deficit, $9 million in the red, and yeah, okay, the $10,000 fee doesn't cover that, but it was a tough first three meetings that I had here, in trying to figure out what we were going to do with, with that, and we're working our way out of it. Talking individually with council members after that, they really do support the Mills Act, and I think rather than a, and we have to be careful, because fees are what it costs to do the service, but remember, councils can charge up what it costs 100% or something less, they just can't charge more. They certainly understand that there are really important structures in this city that may be owned by people that can't afford 10, but they also believe there are structures in the city that are owned by people that can, and maybe we need to look at some districting, or some, something else, where we feel that we're being more equitable, and encourage people that might not live in a home that would justify that kind of investment. The other thing that councils really look at, and they've asked me to report back on, I haven't done it yet, is what in property tax, because property tax is future revenue to the city that the, the city's giving away. In Pasadena, if I may go back to your question, what we did is we capped it each year, and the council then was comfortable that there wasn't this sucking sound of property tax going out, and each year, Mills Act would be approved up to a certain amount, and then if you qualified, we could still approve them, it's just that it was the next year, and you went against that. So, there's some other things we can do that I think might make council a little more comfortable, and maybe that's a discussion that the commission can have with, with me, or with, with planning staff at the appropriate time.
I would love to be a part of those discussions, when and if they take place, but my, I've been in real estate for 30 years in Santa Ana, and I can guarantee you that having properties that are on the Historic Registry and are Mills Act protected raise property values of the entire neighborhood, and not every house is on the Mills Act or on the registry.
Yeah.
Many, many, many more are not than are. So, I think, you know, we want to, we want to, all ships rise with the rising tide, and we want to make sure that we're holding up our best properties in their best light, because that's good for the neighborhoods, it's good for the city, it has a very positive benefit. Even though you may take a loss on an individual property, I think the overall is a big net gain.
Make, make it up from the, the rest of the, that's a very good point, wanted to certainly to consider.
Anyone? We just want to, just go in, we have right now, is it 651 historic properties in our city?
Yes, sir.
And we have 77 applications, you know, and we're doing our very best, okay? So, I was discussing with Commissioner Marashi, and I'm saying, we don't want to burn out our staff, okay, in helping with this presentation, so we're looking at, you know, sometime in January, because of the fact that they have a deadline, and we have 27 more properties to go over, is that?
Total of 27.
Total of 27.
Total of 27 for the remainder of the year.
Right, before, the. Right, before the December 31st. So we wanted to, you know, thank, I want to thank you for your invitation, you know, for us to present our commission. And we want to do the very best presentation in all the city. We have, we're a little prideful here. But we're also very cognizant of the time our staff are putting into these applications at the same time. So, you know, we're going to be targeting probably January during that time to give us and the staff and we're also going to be including everyone on the commissioner for their input to go into what do we want to present to our city. So just to be, you know, courteous to say, this is the timeframe that we're looking at on that, rather than to say, are they going to get back with me or not? But yeah, we're targeting January.
And we'll make a note of that and amazingly, January is only seven council meetings away. So it's, that would be perfect. I'm sure, I know we have two already lined up for October and I think some interest in November, so January sounds like a great schedule.
Well, see, ours is, our target date is before December 31st, so.
Yeah.
But we really want to thank you and appreciate you coming down to our meeting. That shows how much you value our commission, the residents that are putting these beautiful homes on the historic property and the interest in our city. So we want to really thank you for coming. Everybody ready?
Thank you. Thank you for the time and my door is open, as I said. If there are other questions, don't hesitate to call on my office. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Melanie.
Onwards and upward. So the second project we have to review tonight is also in Park Santiago on 1909 North Point Seria. It's proposed to be called the Mulfeta House. And once again, it is proposed that it be contributive on the historic list. Built in 1939, it's a good example of a minimal traditional architectural style. And some of the features that go along with the house is that it was built, as we mentioned, in 1939 by Roy Russell, which I'm sure most of you are familiar with. It is, has minimal use of what you'd say applied ornamentation. The architectural features include shutters and it has an elaborate entry surround, including awning and pilasters on either side of the door, which you can see in white in the photo. So it, it, as we mentioned, it's considered a very good example of period architecture representing minimal traditional style architects from Santa Ana and also contributes to the overall character of Park Santiago neighborhood. So based on that, it's recommended that the Historic Commission adopt a resolution to approve both being added to the list and noted as a contributive structure and recommend that city council authorize the Mills Act agreement 2017-13.
Would the homeowner like to come up at this time? Mr. Meyer, we met your wife on Sunday.
Yes, you did. And she is out of town, flying back from Tampa as we speak, so otherwise she would have been here. But I just want to express how excited we are to be presented to the commission and to be considered to be a historical home. Both of us have grown up, although not in Orange County for me, but in Ohio, but I grew up in a home similar to this structure. It was a 1939, actually more of a craftsman style bungalow, but I grew up with the salvaged wood floors and staircases with woodwork and whatnot. So it's always been a favorite of mine as well as for my wife. So this is something that we, that we really feel in our heart about wanting to continue to keep the tradition of the home alive and move in that direction.
Thank you so much for coming out. We really appreciate it.
And thank you all very much.
Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written?
No.
No, okay. The public hearing is now open. Okay. If there's anyone else that would like to speak? If not, commissioners?
I just have a couple of comments about the property. We all know Roy Russell, but typically we associate his name with more of the homes in the 50s and he actually built as early as, or as late as the early 60s. So this was really a house at the beginning of his career. And so that I think makes it significant for that reason alone. Stylistically, he kind of developed a trend in the 50s. He always had knotty pine paneling and things like that that were hallmarks of his homes. But this really predates that and it makes it a unique property, I think, for that reason. It's got the sweetest little entry porch around the front door and very proud to have this house being presented tonight.
Any other questions, comments? I like to say, look at the date, 1939, and this minimalist, because of the fact that you had the working class that was coming in to the city of Santa Ana, this was your affordable housing. It cost $3,000, okay? Affordable housing at that time. So that was, you know, to come in and say, okay, we need to have affordable housing. So we have a point in history to say, when did we have affordable housing in Santa Ana? 1939. And from this minimalist architecture, if you expand it on, it was the beginning of the ranch-style homes, if you see that. So this is very contributive as far as leading to, you know, what was the need during that time and how did they build upon that particular structure, architecture to go on to have the ranch style today? So this is a very unique home. And once again, this is one of those homes, pictures do not do it justice. That's why you have to go out and, you know, take a tour in the neighborhood to see that it is absolutely a gorgeous piece of property.
I do have one other comment on the description of the house on page one. It actually says the subject property consists of blah, 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 and it says, and a detached garage. The garage is in fact attached to the house. So that's just a correction that I think staff can make on the description. It's on page one under project location and site description.
Any other comments? Is there a motion?
I'd like to move approval of this, that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2017-6 and approving Historic Register Categorization And also recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and clerk of the council to execute a Mills Act agreement with Angela Meyer, subject to non-substantive changes, and approval by the city manager and city attorney.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Glenn. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Meyer. Ms. Melanie.
So the third location this evening is located in Floral Park and it's located at 2340 North Riverside Drive. It's proposed that the house be called the Dr. Harry G. Huffman House. And it was constructed in 1926 and is a very good example of Tudor architectural style. So some of the features that you might recognize here that are character-defining is the finishing, of course, with the stucco. The architectural detailing includes rolled eaves and steeply pitched gable roof, signature for this style of house. A brick-end chimney at the far right of the picture and multiple fixed windows, encasement windows that, once again, are rectangular and round arched. So as you can see, this is a very good example of period architecture as an English Revival style. And based on that, it's recommended that the commission adopt a resolution to place it on the list and identify it as a contributive structure to the neighborhood and district and recommend that council also move forward to authorize the Mills Act Agreement 2017-06. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No? Okay, moving on. Is the homeowner here? No, okay. Then moving on. Have we received any secretary? No written communication? Okay. Is there anywhere out in the audience that would just like to speak on this property? Not moving forward? I did open the public hearing, didn't I? Yeah, I did open, okay. And bring it to commissioners. I want to point out that roof, okay? I have a thing with roof, with roof. Bye. What type of material is that?
Composition.
Composition roof, okay. Pictures doesn't do it justice. It's a lattice pattern. It's the most unusual pattern that they have for the material. It's just not put there as something, but it's like a lattice, a lattice pattern, which adds to the look of that property. Once again, this is a property you really have to go out and look at it. It's a beautiful home and it really truly reflect the period that this home is coming in. This is one of the, help me here, style.
English Tudor Revival.
Tudor Revival, that's on there. But anyway, and the window, just look at that window and that gives the character to the house. It is just absolutely breathtaking, so. So with that, I now close the public hearing and do I have a motion? Mr. Glenn?
Madam Chair, we'd like to adopt the motion to adopt a resolution to approve Historical Research Commission Application Number 2017-10 and approve Historic Register's Categorization Number 212017-09. Recommend that city council authorize city manager and clerk of the council to execute a Mills Act agreement with Mr. Stephen Kulik and Jessica Kulik, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Commissioner Hardy, second, moved by Commissioner Glenn, second by Commissioner Hardy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's give it a tap. Okay, item number four.
Last but not least, we have a home in Fisher Park neighborhood area. And this project is at, the location is at 949 West River Lane, proposed to be noted as the Tetter House. It too is proposed to be contributive. The pictures are going to get harder and harder to see with the ranch-style homes because they're relatively wide and so you don't get to see it quite as close as some of the other homes. But this, this house is 1948 as far as construction time and it's a very good example of a ranch architectural style. We'll go through and try and highlight some of those defining character features, which would include, which you can't really see in the dark portion of the house, is the horizontal clapboard siding throughout, the white area, the vertical wood boards in the gable ends. You can see that to the left and to the right on the picture. The triangular dovecoats underneath the gable. And of course, there's the original windows and doors. The broad entry porch design, typical of a ranch-style house. And see the rounded brick-clabbed pier and lantern in the, in the front, kind of in the, right next to the driveway area is also an accent feature. So based on that this is a good example of period architecture for the ranch-style, architectural style, it's recommended that the commission consider adopting a resolution to approve its placement on the list as a contributive structure and recommend that city council authorize moving forward with the Mills Act. Be happy to entertain any questions.
Yes, I have a question. Okay. I'm improving my vocabulary, okay, and my understanding of architectural term. What's a dovecoat?
It's the, in the, to the left of the picture, the little dots, they look like dots, but they are actually triangular dovecoats. They're like little vents, if you will.
Oh, okay, so that's what that, because we're looking, yeah, that's them. So it's called a dovecoat?
It's a particular shape and the way that it's arranged there.
Okay. See, we were, we just didn't have the right terminology. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. And the, I understand that the applicants are wonderful, it's like, right? Cruising the Mediterranean on holiday, okay? But Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication? No. The public hearing is now open. Okay. Is there anyone that want to speak on this particular property? Even though you're not the owner? Okay, no problem. Then what, the public hearing is now open and I am now going to bring it close to the public hearing, bring it back to the commission. Do I hear a motion?
I'm sorry, I have a couple of comments. Of course, I have comments on every house, it seems like, especially tonight. On the description on page 4.6, there's something that needs to be changed. And just as the primary entry is a contemporary wood door, it actually has the original wood door to the house from 1948. I actually sold this house four times. And so like 30 years ago, it had that same door on it. And the thing that intrigues me about this house, it really is an early, early, great example of a ranch home. In the 50s and 60s, most ranch homes had stucco around the exterior, maybe some wood siding to hearken back to a house like this, which is, this actually has wood siding all the way around the entire exterior of the house. Plus, as a wonderful, long front porch, it doesn't really show up in the picture very well, but it's got the original brick paving all across that front porch and it's just a charming place to sit. You see, they've got some patio furniture there. And it's a great example. It's one of the early homes from River Lane. I believe the first home was 1946. And in the description, the, what I'd like to see maybe added into the Jack Fisher Park area is that the original owners of that land were the McFadden family. And they had a daughter named Edith who married a man named Lindsey and the McFaddens gave them this land as a wedding present. And then the Lindsays developed River Lane and they named Sharon Road after their daughter Sharon. And so it's a kind of a fun, little bit of history about this. I actually sold the Lindsey home about 25 years ago, met Sharon of Sharon Road fame. The parents had passed away and they had the very first home. They, I asked them why they picked the name River Lane and they had read a book about a family who had a home on a creek and there's Santiago Creek right behind this. And that house was on River Lane, so they thought that sounded nice and that's why they picked that. And so it's just a fun little bit of history, maybe we can add in in the future for Jack Fisher Park homes. But of course, the McFaddens were an Orange County pioneer family, McFadden Wharf in Huntington, McFadden Avenue in Santa Ana, et cetera. So just a little bit of extra history I wanted to add in here. Thank you.
Is there not a home that you didn't sell in this area?
Tonight, I'm batting a thousand. But I did not sell the last one to the recent owner. That was prior.
Oh, my God. Amazing, amazing. This is why we come, so that we can get more information to put in there. And McFadden Street is named after the McFaddens, right?
Yes, yeah. So it would be my privilege to recommend the, if there are no other comments from commissioners, that we.
Did you have a comment?
I just want to make a comment out there. First of all, thanks to my chair, Philip Schaefer, for a very detailed explanation to get a beautiful picture of the home. One thing I'll comment is that the, in justice for the property, have a big tree in front of the house, cove at whole entire view of the beautiful home. of the house, cover the whole entire view of the beautiful home. If any, we can trim, ask the homeowner to trim or something. We can see a beautiful home, they're range-style home and that tree really covered the whole entire home.
I think we should make that a condition of approval tonight.
The current owners actually re-landscaped the front yard when they bought. They've been there less than a year and there was another tree right in the middle of the yard, very close to the house in Magnolia and their landscape architect said, you need to take that out because it's covering up the house. And the tree that you see in the picture there was trimmed up, but you know, trees grow so it needs a haircut.
Absolutely need that. Once again, this is a beautiful home, beautiful home. And, and you know, what's interesting about all four homes is the paint color. The paint color that they chose to represent, you know, each style of that home that just brought that particular style to the forefront. So when we say, you've got to see this in person, it's, it's just the details such as the paint to represent that particular period of time of actually what colors what they did, you know, and everything. But once again, it is a very gorgeous home. Okay? Any other commissioner? No?
With that, I'd like to move that we adopt a resolution approving the Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2017-11 and approving Historic Register Categorization 2017-10 and along with that, Mills Act for James and Tanya Skurzinski. And I took that one because no one could probably pronounce that last name.
No. We had, we, we wound up just saying "ski," right? Just the last part of the name, okay? Anyway, um, all those, moved by Commissioner Schaffer, second.
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Marashi. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Let's give them a hand. Okay, that's the end of our business calendar. Let's move into comments, staff comments. Don't all speak at once.
Madam Chair, I just have one comment. Let's get the gauge, temperature gauge of the historic commission here. We just recently started sending our packets to the planning commission via email. The advantage is gets to you right away as opposed to waiting a couple of days for delivery to occur and in case we have glitches with our delivery. So what we've been doing with the planning commission, they've been receptive to getting the email packages to them about a week in advance as soon as we can and then you'll get a hard copy at the DIAA where you come to the meeting. It's right to see what the interest is in this commission and doing the same as well.
I'm old school.
As am I usually.
Okay.
Usually.
I want my book, okay?
We pretty much need a, a complete consensus of all of you. It doesn't benefit us to submit one packet. So if, if one or two of you rather have a packet mailed to you, then we'll get, we'll still keep on delivering it, but we really need all of you to do it to be, be effective.
Okay.
Just to clarify, we're still going to get our packet, the printout here, right?
Yes, when you show up at 4:30 on your Thursday, you'll have a packet on your desk there.
Okay. Commissioner Wen?
I, we, I have used practice with the electronic format from the planning commission and it's very helpful, you know, for, for myself and also it'd be economically saving some budget for the city that, the delivered package at home and everything else saved the tree as well. So I, I would agree with the electronic format, the PDF format, so we can able to review information up and easier on our own leisure and have the computer and also to have the hard copy available to us at the meeting.
Commissioner Hardy?
So, am I understanding correctly, this binder won't be delivered any longer to the front porch with the hard copy? We'll just get it when we come to the commission meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Unless you want it to come to you.
Well, you would get it via email. You can print it off. Like, like, like we did this time.
Yes, our, our attempt is to get them email out to you at least a week in advance. You have plenty of time to review the report, visit the sites if you'd like and if you have any questions, get back with staff. We could even try this, Madam Chair, on a trial basis, maybe for a couple of meetings, try the email version and have the packets there when you get here if you'd like, whatever is best for the, for the commission, we're here to, to assist.
I want my book. Yeah, I'd kind of like the hard copy too, but I could go either way.
I would say try the, I'd like to try the electronic copy first if it comes down to, because we're, you're still going to have to print this out here, but I think we would be saving the city some funds, which is important. But, so I'm willing to try out the electronic version and see how that goes.
I'm great with the electronic. My wife would be happy to have one less cluttered item in the house.
Okay. Marashi?
I'm fine with electronic.
I could go either way, but I, I mean, I, this, what I typically do, you know, I, I get it, I have my assistant print it out, so I, I get a chance to read it. Because I had it some, I mean, a week, I think, or some days before I got it delivered to my house, so, um, here you are. Lawrence?
Yeah, I would go along with just the electronic delivery. I, I have the use of the, of hard copy because I'll take it out when I go and look at the, the properties and compare what it says with what I'm seeing, but, and I'm not going to print out the whole thing, but I'll just print out the pages and write down the addresses and, and then check it before I go out and, and think. Usually have so many to see that I have to go out more than once anyway, so I'd look at two or three or four, two or three at most at times. So let's do it because I know it's a, it's a nuisance to have to deliver them. It's a cost to the, to the city, so let's just do it that way.
Many times they don't show up when they're supposed to and it's a day or two later, so it just ends up getting later to get to you. Madam Chair, would you be willing to try it for a meeting or two?
I, I'll just come and pick it up from the city. I really want this because we have one computer or one printer and my grandson is homeschool and printing out, I mean, you know, and cartridges at the same time and there are a lot of pages here, you know, that, that's the whole thing and everything else. And I'm retired. I don't get a raise, okay, and so forth. So, I mean, I could just come in and pick it up, but I really want, you know, and especially helpful, especially as we're going to see these properties, you know, out there and look at the descriptions because it's, it's, it's a lot and we got, of, we have four, we got 23 more homes to see and to print out this, it's, it's, it's quite a amount. Okay? Okay?
That's it, thank you.
That's it.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, thank you. Quick update on the Mills Act applications that you correctly reported out on a few moments ago. We do have 77 pending applications, I'm sorry, 77 total applications received to date for 2017. We do have and have scheduled 27 for future HRC agendas. That does include the items here before you this afternoon. We are hoping to bring an additional nine to 10 to you on October 5th, so we're, we're working away at, at the total number. One item to keep in mind is that for the, for the meeting of the 19th that was originally scheduled, as I mentioned at previous meetings, we're working on cross-training several staff members. As you noticed, this evening, there were three separate staff members that were working on these categorizations and Melanie was gracious enough to cover the two staff members that weren't present. So what we're going to do is ask for a bit more additional time for some, some staff training and attempt to move the 10-19 or cancel the 10-19, October 19th meeting. I believe our commission secretary has reached out to you and asked about your availability for the 26th to afford us some additional time to cross-train and get some of those applications completed by the year end. We're hopeful that we will get through all 27 and that is our goal.
So, are, uh, so October 26th, is that confirmed?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's the HRC at 4:30, okay?
So we're not doing 10-19?
No. Okay. Okay.
And one other follow-up item, you had asked for a link to the existing register of historic properties that was last updated. I just want to make sure you all received the link and were able to access that link?
Yes, we did.
Yes, thank you.
Great. That is all this evening, thank you.
I have a question for staff. So are, we have, just to confirm, okay, October 5th, okay, for HRC, the 26th for HRC, is there any other ones?
That's what we can commit to at this time. As I mentioned, we're trying to get all hands on deck to try to train additional staff to bring additional applicants forward and move them along. And I want to thank the applicants that are here this evening that have been patient in waiting to get before the commission. We will be notifying the additional 41 applicants that we will be seeing their applications at probably the first quarter of, of 2018. So we are trying to reach out to all the folks and have advised the October 5th applicants that they will be heard on the 5th. So we've done that and trying our best to communicate with, with our applicants.
Okay, very good. Any other questions from staff?
Just one last assistant, additional language. We may also try for November 2nd if we can get a few more of those listings done. That will be the last meeting we can do because we have to get the council in December to make these things effective this year. So if there is one more meeting, it'd be November 2nd, it looks like. So you may get an email next week or so, checking your availability for that last date as well.
I just have one, one other thing. We noticed that the, the evaluators and so forth, we, the company is no longer be doing the write-off for us now?
That is correct. They have completed their agreement. They agreed to assist us with a total of 20 of the DPR forms and so at this point, we're looking for some additional resources for training from the same consultant to, to assist us with the remainder of the applications.
Okay, very good. All right. Okay. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, Commissioner comments. Welcome.
Thank you.
Janelle?
Yes, I'd like to welcome our new Commissioner, Kenneth Wen, Wen, and congratulate all the property owners on their new listings and those that have Mills Act.
Okay. Commissioner?
Welcome to our newest Commissioner.
Thank you. Commissioner Rush?
Yes, welcome, Ken, to our group and, and hope that you find it fulfilling for yourself and helpful to us. So I do have a couple of comments and that is, I want to, want to encourage staff, of course, it was brought up by the city manager about this fee study. I, and I, I think if you, if you would like, I can have Krista Nichols, who is our executive director for Preserve Orange County. She's done a, she's done, she's done all the research. She can forward it to you in terms of what, what the other 34 cities in the county, what they chart, I mean, of course, not all 34 of them have, have Mills Act, et cetera. In fact, it's nowhere close to that, but I want to say it's 12 or something. But send that to you, but we, we need to, we need to get on that, so. I'll continue to beat the drum about what I had brought up at, at my very first meeting several months ago and that is about us adopting the Historic Preservation Awards from the Historical Commission. Last time that was done was something like 10, nine or 10 years ago. Hopefully, something's being done towards, towards that. Also, at our last meeting, when I had made the motion to approve the landmark status for the 888 North Main Building and I sort of playfully inserted into my motion that the applicant would install a plaque, a bronze plaque in the lobby to honor the architect and what he represented in terms of mid-century architecture and so forth. And I got a, a text or phone call the next day or a couple of days later from William Bobo saying that Mike agreed to do that and thought it was a great idea. I, I really believe that this body ought to have that kind of authority. It shouldn't be just a hope and a wish. We ought to have the authority to ask where appropriate an applicant to do things like that. I mean, as long as it's not, you know, a laundry list of 15 items, but it, I, I have to believe that many historical commissions have that kind of authority. That, to me, seems perfectly reasonable. So looking into the issue of expanded authority. Also, if, maybe when we're done here, you can give us a status on replacing Hallie's position, where that's at. And then lastly, I'd like to extend an invitation to all of you, especially the commissioners and staff. The inaugural rollout for Preserve Orange County is going to be on the 3rd of November at 5:30 at the, I think it's called the Hilbert Museum, Hilbert Gallery at Chapman University. And we're going to have a reception, if you will, and some remarks, state of preservation in the county. Preserve Orange County is the new preservation organization created to model in Orange County what LA conservancy represents for the county of Los Angeles. So we're, we're just getting off the ground and this will be our inaugural rollout event, so put that on your calendar. It's free and so I think you'll, you'll want to come to that. That's all I have, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Marashi?
Hi, again, I want to welcome Commissioner Wen to the commission. He's going to have a lot of fun. I also want to thank all the homeowners for bringing your homes in front of us. It's wonderful to see them and see you out here and talking about your homes. I also want to thank staff, especially Melanie, for updating the list of all the properties that are on the register and putting that on the website. And finally, I've been having a little bit of fun myself. I've gone off and started visiting a couple of different cities in Orange County to meet with their historical preservationists, so to get their points of view of how they handle things. I thought maybe that Miami dies. One of the things I learned was that they all meet quarterly and share information via email and everything else and Melanie's tied into that and so they already do share information. But hopefully, we can all put our heads together, figure out how to improve our system, lower the rates and, and do some great things. Thank you.
I just want to congratulate the homeowners tonight and point out that we had two homes in Park Santiago, one in Floral Park and one in Jack Fisher Park. So it's great to see that they're not all just in Floral Park. Some nights, it's like very Floral Park-heavy and tonight, it was sort of the opposite. So congratulations to all of you pioneers from the other neighborhoods that did that. And then the, I also want to welcome Ken Wen to the commission. Good to have you here.
Thank you.
Once again, I would like to thank all of you for, for number one, coming out and investing in your, you know, your home and putting it on historic registry and we really appreciate that, okay? And with that, meeting is now adjourned. Our next meeting, Rick, will be October 5th here.
Madam Chair, if I, if I may, I believe Commissioner Rush asked for a quick update on our associate planner recruitment in, for Holly Sobuleski's position. The, the latest is that the, the job bulletin has been posted and we have yet to interview any sort of candidate for the position in comprehensive planning. Just to give you an overview where we're at today, we have two full-time staff members and two part-time staff members working on historic preservation, comprehensive planning and urgent, regional planning activities with the city. We're helping to get that position filled as soon as possible.
If I could ask, what does that position, what's the salary range on that position?
Salary range is posted on our city's website. I can certainly follow up with you on that. I can send you an email to, with, with the range on the position itself.
Okay. I thought you had to research, but I should have known, Bernie, that you handed the information at hand. Look again, my good friend Ken. Welcome. Ken and I also serve on the bond oversight for Santa Ana College. You know, we sit right next to each other, so, you know, it's good to have a friend here on the commission. And with that, now, we'll adjourn until October the 5th. And with that, now we'll adjourn until October the fifth. Thank you so much. Everyone, have a great night.